Dumping ice. Little smoke. That one's somebody over here left field. It's not gonna look like you kicked the girls off to the side though. Aaron's gonna join me out here left field next.
Okay, that deserved her for it.
What, they two on that end?
Well, at least we'll be balanced.
Any kind of order? Ten point wait.
United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call please.
Councilor McHenry?
Here.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lederlein?
Here.
Councilwoman Salamani?
Here.
Mayor Ashworth?
Here.
Hope to comment, we don't have any sign up, but I want to ask Annie Durham to update some school.
Good evening, council, my name is Annie Durham, I reside at 309 Aspen Street. Just a little update on progress at the school, I'll touch upon our programs first and then share a little bit about our Adult Education Center. As we get to the end of the school year, this is the mad rush to the finish line. Our culinary students are going to be taking their Surf Safe Food Hamlets certification tests next week and they will conclude the year by catering the Golden Purple Ball at the Cripple Creek Elks Lodge number 316 on May 21st, which would make five events that they have catered this year. We had the Colorado Restaurant Association visit the school today, we'll be utilizing their ProStar curriculum next year and they were really happy with our facilities and the direction we've been going, so it's nice to get that affirmation from an outside entity on our progress. Fireside students, I've shared previously that two of our seniors passed their firefighting one state examination in January and February. They will be deploying with Stone Mountain. Probably a little bit before the year's over actually, they'll be doing wildland firefighting over the summer. So we have two firefighters coming out of our first year of the program, which is fantastic. I can't remember if I shared previously the construction trades building. We had procured a building previously that we were going to utilize, but it became more apparent that we're honestly better off getting a building that is built to spec for what our needs are. And so we are actually going to be purchasing a new building, which is going to be more cost effective than the one we have because the one we have does not meet the snow load limit, which would require a lot of additional steel to make it compliant, and so we're going to go ahead and sell that. We are working with our contractor now. But it's going to have the classroom setting, the building area, and instead of doing the greenhouse outside of the building, we're actually going to build a sunroom into the construction trades building itself, so it'll all be self-contained. We should be breaking down ground on the foundation this summer. The shell will go up around October and then completion of the internals of the buildings by January or February. That being said, we will still have construction trades classes for semester because there's a lot of projects that these guys can be doing in the meantime. And Mike Pollig, our construction trades teacher, has already been working with a few student interns on projects, and so very much looking forward to that. Lastly, our Adult Education Center, we are having a open house on April 27th, which is next Wednesday, from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. The purpose of the Adult Education Center is really to connect adults in the community with opportunities for skills training, employment, or say, somebody applies at the mine and they need steel-toed boots to be able to work at the mine, we can help fund things like that. And so it's gonna be a pretty wide range of opportunities, we'll be also partnering with other businesses and entities to make those connections for employment for the adults in the community. Sorry, I always try to think if I've got everything. I think that's pretty much it, we're gonna be working with the Pike Peak Workforce Center, Denise Wilson's gonna be there every Thursday. She's gonna be teaching the Bring Your A Game program to our juniors and seniors before the end of the school year, which is a soft skills training, and she'll continue to do that with our students and adults in the future. And then Angie Trelstad's gonna come in and she'll do a financial literacy class, so there'll be some classes taught at the education center as well. But because it's so brand new, we're still building it, and that being said, we are always open to suggestions as well. So, soft opening house, 2:00 to 4:00 PM on the 27th, and you can just stop by and check out what we've got, and I'd be happy to show it off. So, I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Cool, thank you.
General Mass from prior meeting, April 6th, 2022.
On a motion that we approve ordinance from the regular meeting, April 6th, 2022.
I'll second, go please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Salamani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Turey?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lederlein?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Reports, City Minister.
Not a lot to report, mayor, just a little bit about some of my meetings. Went to Victor City Hall and met with the people in the City Hall Glory. Ted asked me to attend their Teller County Resource Group meeting at the Aspen Mountain Center, so I did that. I met with Superintendent Von Dragon and her nice group at the school and we talked about having a joint meeting with the school board and the city council, so she was all for that. So, down the road, I think if y'all would like that, I think we need to start having maybe a quarterly meeting so we could kind of help the school, they can help us, we can kind of talk about projects we're working on together and move forward with the city. So, that's something that she was interested in and I'm interested in, I told her to bring it up at the meeting, so that'll be something we schedule in the future. Paul and I had a video meeting with Annie Oatman Gardner, she's the regional director with Senator Bennett's office, she called us, wanted to talk. The feds have given money to the senators and he had about 200 projects that were submitted to him this year, I think they funded 64, does that sound right? Something like that, for the $600,000, $600 million that he distributed throughout Colorado. So she wants to get us on that list. So we talked about our projects and our needs and had a real good conversation with her, so I think we're gonna be in contact with her on a regular basis. See if we can get some help from Senator Bennett. Y'all know, we've talked to Mr. Baxter at Bronco Billy's regarding the parking, we had that conference earlier, we're also talking to them about the fiber, the rerouting of our connections with the PD. Met this morning with Teller County Sheriff's Office, we had a real good meeting, talked about recruitment of police and sheriff's deputies, so that was a good meeting. And then I had an interview with Rick from the jackpot or crackpot, whichever you wanna call it, thank you.
My name is Francis Oak. Good evening, council. I'm gonna give you a number of updates on the sports betting side. Frank and I had a meeting April 17th with Director Hartman from, who runs the Division of Gaming. And we talked about some of our ideas. He felt that the way the legislature is going this year, that the funding is being pushed more into problem gaming areas and into the state's water fund, and that it would be hard to get in front of either of those, so he was not particularly encouraging on that level. Also, Representative Hanson is working with Saul, there's still talk of potentially doing a special carve-out for Cripple Creek in one of the bills that's up there now. They were looking at the Main Street program, but as we dug into that further, there really wasn't an application for local government that were not involved in that program. That was more of a lone program for small businesses. And as Frank mentioned, we did have a good conversation with Annie Gardner from Senator Bennett's office. On the disappointing front, the Joint Budget Committee introduced, and I sent you an email on this this afternoon. Joint Budget Committee had Representative Hanson, who we've been working with, and Zen Zinger are sponsoring a bill put forward by the Joint Budget Committee, which will hurt Cripple Creek in our gaming tax distribution to the general fund and to the historic preservation fund. And just a short version, the bill is really, it's moving money from the original limited states tax fund distribution into the extended, which hurts us based on the formula, it's used two different formulas between those two. And it's also taking away some funding from State HP to community colleges. That'll impact us on the HP side of the distribution, but they're carving out a one-time funding into State HP from the general fund at the state level to try and make them whole. So, we have been talking with Blackhawk, Central City, and both the gaming companies and our lobbyists. So, there are 12 days left in the session, this was dropped late yesterday afternoon. The negotiations were only between the governor's office, State HP, and the junior colleges. So, no one else was included in the discussions or got to voice their concerns, so we're going to try and ramp up like this will. Any questions on that? We'll keep you informed on those items. On the COVID front, unfortunately cases are starting to increase again. We've been fortunate, we've had no deaths in April so far. But all three of our, the main indexes that we look at are worse this week than they were last week. And we had second quarter device count. Device count for the second quarter is 2,826 machines, which is an increase of 26 devices, or approximately 1%. Cripple Crown Properties added 20 of those, so we appreciate that very much. But to put it in a larger context, second quarter of '22 compared to first quarter of '20 before COVID hit, we are still down 759 machines, or 21%. So at the height of it, we were down almost 25, down to 21%. So it's, we are not rebounding rapidly, and multiple factors go into that. That's all I have this, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Going into new business, Gen I M F. Consider approval of Resolution 2022-07, acknowledging completion of the streetcar planning study and the redesign of the transit bus, we could operate a storing facility.
Good evening, council, that's right, your transportation director. This is just basically close the projects out, to acknowledge that we have completed them. And with this document, I can move forward, C.D.O., to pursue additional funding.
What is it? Size of grant, or what, what exactly?
Well, are you asking what the next step's gonna be?
Yeah.
The next step would be finding stakeholders that would provide match. We have to identify match prior to submitting for the grants. They have to, C.D.O. would like to see a resolution to move forward.
Any questions?
I motion that we approve Resolution 2022-07. Resolution.
You don't have three, Rick.
Okay.
I'll second.
Go please.
Mayor Proton Lederlein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Salamani?
Yes.
Councilwoman McHenry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
All right, Gen I M F. Consider approval of Resolution 2022-08, approving an update to the personnel handbook. Heather?
Good evening, mayor and council, Heather Hildebrand, HR technician. We are requesting this approval, we just made some updates to the police department's cruel rates for sick in vacation. After we originally did the personnel handbook, but came to here and said, can we look at these numbers? And we get and came up with a more equitable amount based on their schedules. Any questions? I can certainly go over more.
Hi, I just, I read through what you had put together and I think it's fair.
Okay, do you have a motion?
I motion that we approve Resolution 2022-08.
I'll second. Go please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman McHenry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lederlein?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Thank you, Heather. Gen I M F. Second reading to consider adoption of ordinance 2022-01. An ordinance amended Chapter 4, Orca Fab, for the Cripple Creek Minnesota Code, increasing device fees.
Mayor, I need to reiterate myself on this?
This is second reading, so just a quick overview. The device fee is going from $300 per device to $330, a 10% increase, it goes to effect at the start of the third quarter, which is July. And it also has a built-in expiration.
Do you have a motion? I'll motion that we approve Resolution 2022-08.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Okay. Yeah, there we go. To approve adoption of ordinance 2022-01. Yeah, I apologize.
And I'll second that as well.
Go please.
Councilwoman Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lederlein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Gen I M F. Consider approval of Resolution 2022-09. A resolution denying an appeal for a lodging business license to operate a short-term rental at certain real property commonly described as 317 East Golden Avenue, Cripple Creek, Colorado.
Mayor and council, this resolution memorializes the action that you took at, that the Board of Adjustment took at its meeting on April 6th. At that meeting, the Board of Adjustment heard testimony in a public hearing in connection with a request for a short-term rental license that had been denied. After hearing that testimony, the Board of Adjustment requested that the city attorney bring back a resolution denying that license and upholding the denial by the zoning administrator. This resolution is before you and contains the findings that were made that evening. And I would recommend that you adopt this resolution and thereby finalize that process and would be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
All right, do you have a motion?
It's your turn.
Go please.
It's your turn, Amy.
Go ahead, Laura.
I approve that we adopt Resolution 2022-09.
Second. Go please.
Councilwoman McHenry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lederlein?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Second reading to consider adoption ordinance 2022-02. An ordinance barricading the portion of South Third Street right-of-way line norally of the, norally right-of-way line east of Masonic Avenue and Myers Avenue, and southerly, or southern line of alleys within blocks 21 and 22, Cripple Creek. Located in the south half of Section 13, township 15, range 70. West of the 6th, the central median, Cripple Creek, Colorado. Teller County, State of Colorado. I think, Karen, you?
Yes, mayor and council, again, City Attorney Erin Smith on this. Presented for you is the second, is the ordinance on second reading. You had this presented to you on first reading and it has not changed other than to include the legal descriptions and diagrams of the area that will contain, in the case of Exhibit B, the area that will contain a reserved easement to the city. And in the case of Exhibit C, the area that will accommodate the private improvements that the developer is planning to install. I would point out that there's a long list of conditions attached to the vacation ordinance. One of those conditions was important, that it be satisfied by tonight. That was condition number eight, and it did state that before second reading of this ordinance, applicants shall submit and gain approval of development plan suitable to the city. And I can report to you that that has occurred. So that development plan has been submitted and approved by the city. I would recommend that you approve ordinance number 2022-02, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, comment? Or your motion? I'll motion that we approve ordinance 2022-02. Seven. Go please.
Councilwoman McHenry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lederlein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Salamani?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Gen I M F. Consider approval of development agreement and master license agreement for Cripple Crown Holy Joe FC.
Thank you, mayor. Yes, thank you, mayor and council, and again, Erin Smith, City Attorney, presenting these for you. We have included them as one agenda item and it would be appropriate if, when you get to that point, to simply make one motion to approve both the development agreement and the master license agreement. I will point out that the development agreement is modeled after the Bronco Billy's project development agreement. The city, I think, for that project, took quite a bit of time working with developer back then to develop this form of development agreement, which provides protections for the city. Specifically, what this development agreement does is it obligates the developer to finish the project. So that's really important, you have a contract that obligates the developer to finish the project, the project being the new boutique hotel. It also provides a deadline, an absolute deadline, by which the project is to be finished, that is November 30th, 2024. It also obligates the developer to construct the project in accordance with the approved development plan. So you have a contract that binds the developer to do that. And then probably the key protection that the city has under this development agreement is the obligation that the developer is to supply a bond or letter of credit that secures performance of the project and the amount of that security, and I'm just gonna read right out of this development agreement. The amount of that security shall be $50,000 for each 25 foot of building frontage along Myers Avenue. $50,000 for each 25 feet of the eastern and northern sides of the building, shaped in an L, fronting on the arrival court. 110% of the good faith estimated cost of water, wastewater, storm drainage, utility, landscaping, streetscaping improvements associated with the project. And 4, 110% of the estimated cost of the Third Street reconstruction work. The Third Street reconstruction work is defined as work that would be necessary if the project goes into default and the developer needs to come back and restore Third Street to its original condition. The agreement also very importantly obligates the developer at the time of signing this agreement to deliver to the city special warranty deeds for the vacated portion of Third Street. And in the event that the project is not completed by the deadline, the city takes those deeds and records them. And the property, the vacated Third Street property reverts back to the city. Finally, this agreement contains a broad indemnification provision, releasing the city from liability and binding the developer to indemnify the city in case any concerns arise or any claims against the city arise out of the construction of this project under the terms of this development agreement. And finally then, there is some relief from that hard deadline in the nature of a force majeure clause, which is substantially similar to the force majeure provision contained in the Bronco Billy's agreement. But in light of what we've all learned in the last couple of years, there is relief to the developer for strictly meeting the deadline in connection with supply chain delays or disruptions. So I would point out that change to city council. I think it's reasonable to include that as relief for the developer, just because of what we've all experienced. That concludes my comments on the development agreement, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those now.
I've got one. On the title says, whereas on November 3rd, 2022, TCH submitted application, went up to that point, did it? I think this was done 2021. November 22nd, that's up here.
Oh, we have the title there, thank you for catching that. Good catch, mayor. We will correct that. If there are no further questions, then I will present for you the master license agreement. So, again, modeled after the Bronco Billy's transaction and project. This project calls for the developer to enter into a master license agreement with the city so that the numerous private improvements that will be installed in Third Street, the portion of Third Street that won't be vacated, and then portions of Gennett Avenue, and then portions of Masonic Avenue. And I'm flipping back to the ordinance because I'm looking at that Exhibit B and Exhibit C, particularly Exhibit C. But because the developer will be installing private improvements into city-owned property, the way to handle that is to have a license agreement that can be revoked by the city in the event that the developer is not meeting the terms of maintenance and installation as are laid out in this agreement. And so that's mainly what the master license agreement does, it says, developer, you have a right to use the city's, the city's public property to install your private improvements for the benefit of your private project, but you will install them in accordance with the standards of this license agreement, and you will maintain them in accordance with the standards of this license agreement. It talks about terms of construction, it talks about how the developer goes about getting specific improvements okayed before they are installed. And it talks about how, if and when they are damaged, they need to be restored. Again, this agreement includes a broad indemnification protecting the city. It also recognizes the fact that this developer's gonna have their private improvements and city right-of-way. And so things like hazardous substance spills are important. And it addresses the developer's obligation to protect the city from any sort of claims that would arise from any hazardous spills, hazardous substances in the city's right-of-way. It also requires the developer to maintain adequate insurance for those private improvements. Finally, it has a form of what's called a supplemental site license attached to it as Exhibit B. And the master agreement will control the arrangement of the ability of the developer to put the private improvements in city property. And then, as each private improvement is ready to be installed, before it can be installed, the developer will have to enter into this supplemental site license that will be very specific to that development or that improvement. If there are any warranties associated with that improvement, they will be laid out in this supplemental site license. If there are any special maintenance provisions, you know, if it's landscaping, if it's the ice melt system, which is the under Third Street system that will melt the ice on Third Street, if it is any of the brick pavers that will cover the city's walkways, then before those are installed, a supplemental site license will have to be entered into. So we feel in this way that the city's protection, the city's interests are well-protected, and that there won't be any doubt as this moves forward for many years. It's anticipated, many years, that these improvements will be in place, that the city will have a document that it can look to to ensure that the developer maintains those improvements the way it should. I would be happy to answer any questions on the master site, the master site license.
Any questions? We're motion to consider approval of the development agreement and master license agreement for Cripple Crown Holdings LLC.
I make a motion that we approve the development agreement and master license agreement for Cripple Crown Holdings LLC.
I'll second. Go please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Salamani?
Yes.
Councilwoman Teneri?
Yes.
Mayor Foulton, another one?
Yes.
Mayor Ashworth?
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Ellen. Have any other business?